Where in Kansas?
State Lord.
Lord something for it.
Call this special council meeting of Mayflower State Council of Orders, December twenty twenty five, six thirty D M. Ms. Barbara will call and vote.
Mark Kigman.
Do we not do a pleasure? Yes, I'm here.
Usually not the special meeting.
Okay.
Please go on.
No, it's okay.
It's on the, it's on the agenda.
I think it's on the agenda because I was.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the states of America, and to the republic which stands in my nation. In the middle of liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'm just about to let you go, though.
Yes, I'm here.
Al Mark.
Here.
James Snyder.
Here.
Larry Hill.
Here.
Ricky Hen.
Here.
Good, uh, just a few agenda items tonight, just some housekeeping things, uh. The first item on the agenda for tonight is, um, ordinance twenty twenty five dash eighteen, um, which is an ordinance to amend ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh four, modifying the mayor's spending allowance. Uh. Ms. Barbara will read the motion, uh, read the ordinance. I actually need a.
I'll proceed to go down there. Yeah, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules, waive. That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah, suspend the rules, waive the second, third reading of ordinance twenty twenty five. Eighteen or nineteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, twenty twenty five eighteen. Um, and read the entire, uh, or read the ordinance by title only and vote on ordinance twenty twenty five eighteen after its initial review.
Yeah, I'll move to the second. Say it.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, waive the second and third reading ordinance twenty twenty five eighteen. Read the ordinance by the Capitol on the way. Mark Kigman?
Yes.
Al Mark?
Yes.
James Snyder?
Yes.
Larry Hill?
Yes.
Ricky Hen?
Yes.
Um, ordinance twenty twenty five dash eighteen, an ordinance amending ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh four, codified at three point oh four, to modify the mayor's discretionary spending allowance, to modify bidding, bidding procedures that could bring in emergency and for other purposes.
Good motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution twenty twenty five oh four.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, eighteen.
Uh, ord- ordinance.
Ordinance.
As well.
Orders.
I'll second.
You did the same.
I did.
Any discussion? And, and I'll say this to everyone, I'm gonna try to change the procedures up to our meetings a little bit, and we're gonna work on some things there. Anytime we do an ordinance, I believe the citizens should have input before we load on said ordinance. Um, so if there's any public input on those elements or questions.
I have a question. So when we modify it, are we mod- did it going up, did it going down?
Can I answer that?
True.
In the past and for years, the mayor has had the ability to spend within a, a certain amount, like five thousand dollars, without coming to us for, for approval. After the, uh, after the last, uh, year's budget was blown and departments blowing budgets and all that, in order to not go just plum broke as a city, which is against the law, we had to put safeguards in place, so we changed that to where everything had to come through the city council before it was spent. It does not make for a, a, an efficient operational system, and so now, uh, provided that our new mayor doesn't blow the budgets and operates within the guidelines that is put forth before him, then he deserves the ri- uh, the right, in my opinion, to, uh, to be able to run and operate the city as intended, so what we're gonna do is raise that back up to five thousand dollars, and it's not to punish anybody, it's just to keep everything, you know, transparent between the lines. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Thank you.
That's correct.
Right.
That's correct.
Yes, absolutely, we are lost, and I'm sure even watching from home, they have questions. I'll restate your question, Mr. Snidgard was asking about the nature of what Mr. Kigman responded to, and Ms. Lutte, uh, what was your about the?
I was just saying, stating that anything over five thousand that you're gonna wanna spend has to come in for city council for a break.
That, that is correct, yes, uh, and there's, there's a thing in there that raises that cap to ten thousand if an emergency is declared, I believe it's, it's one of these. Can you step up, please, now?
Is that something about emergency? How so?
So.
I, I was gonna, I could answer that, um, with, within the, within the ordinance, it does on the emergency spending, um, the emergency, uh, is either declared by Faulkland County Judge or the governor of Arkansas. Um, or I, I believe it's also mentions in here, uh, if there's any immediate, um, threat to the citizens or visitors of Mayflower as well, too. So there's a pretty narrow band for the emergency part.
Any other discussion? All right, Ms. Barbara, will you call and vote?
Mark Cleveland?
Yes.
Al Mark?
Yes.
James Snyder?
Yes.
Larry Hill?
Yes.
Ricky Hen?
And, uh, I make a motion that we, uh, accept the emergency clause of ordinance twenty twenty five dash eighteen.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause of ordinance twenty twenty five dash eighteen.
Any discussion? Ms. Barbara will vote?
Mark Kigman?
Yes.
Al Mark?
Yes.
James Snyder?
Yes.
Larry Hill?
Yes.
Ricky Hen?
Yes.
So that answers, uh, the next item, item B on the general business is resolution twenty twenty five dash forty nine, uh, which repeals section three and four of the resolution twenty twenty five dash oh eight for the mayor's spending. Uh, just as clarification on this, we actually, uh, the council passed a resolution prior to recodifying it in ordinance. So just to clean it up, this would be a repeal of those sections in that resolution as well.
Make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash forty nine.
I'll second.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash forty nine, a resolution revealing section three and section four of resolution twenty twenty five dash oh eight.
Any discussion on resolution twenty twenty five dash forty nine? Um, we just wanna publicly announce what those sections reveal. You want me to read that again?
True. Barbara will vote?
I don't, okay. Um, this is repealing the sections, and this is one of these, section three says, decrease the mayor's discretionary spending from currently five thousand dollars to one dollar for the remainder of his present term as mayor. Section four, revoke any and all expense account allowances that may be added to the mayor. And this is the part that's being, um, it is being, uh, repealed from it. So it's just putting everything back like it was prior to the beginning of this year.
Any other discussion? Barbara will call and vote?
Mark Kigman?
Yes.
Al Mark?
Yes.
James Snyder?
Yes.
Larry Hill?
Yes.
Larry Hill?
Yes.
All right, the next item, item C is ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen, uh, which is an ordinance to create, uh, a city administrative officer position. But I guess we need to, since it's an ordinance, we wanna go through the the rules procedures.
Sure, I'll, uh, make a motion that we suspend, uh, the rules, waive the second and third reading of ordinance twenty twenty five nineteen, uh, read by title only, and vote on ordinance twenty twenty five nineteen after its initial reading.
My second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend rules, waive the second and third reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen. Read the ordinance only and vote on the ordinance after its original reading.
Discussion on rules?
Uh, I got a question. Um, in section two dot point six five zero three zero, the position created, uh, deserve, is that paragraph meant to say that the administrative position, like we're creating it, but doesn't have to be filled? Like, I asked that for, I don't wanna pigeonhole any future mayor with this. Um, you know, I don't want a mayor to come into office and be told that they have to have an administrative, if they don't want, if they want one great, if they don't, okay, so I'm gonna make sure that we don't pigeonhole a future mayor with this.
I mean, it, the way I kinda read it, it, it does, uh, it, it does sound like it's creating a, a position, um, serving at the, at the mayor's discretion, um, so I, I don't, I don't think we'll have anything, I don't think it has to be filled.
And to that, and James, I know everything, that's a great question. If you look at that next section two, uh, dot point six dash oh zero, when it talks about vacancy, it says in the event of, of vacancy, uh, we're going forward on that, when it talks about appointment, uh, it's appointed by mayor, approved by the majority of council. The tenure will serve, uh, subject to removal by the mayor with approval from the majority of the council, the city council may also initiate removal by majority vote, uh, subject to act of the law, which I believe is two thirds vote. Uh, and then part C vacancy, in the event of a vacancy, the mayor made, the one we made designated interim administrator subject to council approval. Meaning if the mayor didn't want that, and it was the council's wish to grant that to the mayor, uh, at that point, then if it were not a filled, then this ordinance would be really overchanged with that one, I would think.
And we have, we have had one in the past, probably about, um, thirty two thousands, and that position has been vacant, so it wasn't ever filled for that person, so.
I guess that's, that's my question with this, is, is this one required to be, or can the mayor decide that they don't want, because it, it doesn't say discretionary, mayor's direction. So there's, there's nothing written in there that is discretionary, um, for the mayor. It seems to come back to the city council, and so since this is a position that the mayor, I think that it's important that a future mayor who doesn't want this position, uh, not be required to have it, they would need a city council vote to overturn it. Then they just marginalized the new mayor. So I don't want to be, I don't wanna trap one of the future mayor in a structure that they don't want.
This is a, this is not the, the city manager form of government, this is still the mayor city council form of government, this is something that we're making a, the position for, even though you don't have to put somebody in it, it's specifically because he's already there, but, um, as she said, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think about what you're saying. If the mayor chooses not to fit, put a pos- put somebody in that position, then it'll go back just like it was for the last, what, sixteen years where nobody, you know, there's a position's always, always been there that hadn't been filled. Um, just like everything else, I mean, we accept your, your, your important, you know, police chief, fire chief, things like that, you know, there's a lot of positions that, that you could go without filling, and so.
I appreciate this discussion, and I do wanna continue it. But the motion on the table is actually what the, what the ordinance procedure. Vote on, and then we'll get to the actual ordinance, and I would encourage more discussion on the ordinance itself. Barbara will vote on the, to Ms. Donovan?
Mark Kigman?
Yes.
Al Mark?
Yes.
James Snyder?
Yes.
Larry Hill?
Yes.
Ricky Hen? Ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen, an ordinance amending the Mayflower Municipal Hall to add title to chapter two point two six, city administrator defining duties, authority, recorded structure, ethics, and related administrative provisions, providing with qualification, separability, and repeal declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Good motion.
So I'll make a motion, we adopt the ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen.
Any discussion, uh, you said it.
And there's further discussion ahead?
Yeah, I just wanna be sure that I understand it, um, you know, I, you're a mayor, and if this is what you want, then that's, I have no objection to that whatsoever. Uh, I just wanna be sure that we know that a future mayor is not handicapped or sidelined by a council that doesn't like the mayor, or is fighting the mayor, or someone like that, because we all know politics happen. So I just wanna, I just wanna be sure that one of the positions created, future mayor can in fact leave it empty should they decide not to.
I think through process, I think just based on this, they could, a lot would have to be reimagined, because when you look at specific assigned functions and, um, delegate, there clearly there are a lot of things there that would have to be reassigned somewhere other than this position, uh, things that are already being filled by a current city employee, uh, I think the, the nature of this ordinance was more about bringing specific authorities to, uh, assets that have already been put on, on a position.
Yeah, I don't, I have absolutely no problem with that, I just be sure that where a future mayor come in, that they have the ability to run their office as they used to be.
I mean, also, within, uh, in two twenty six dash oh four oh, uh, section D, elected official, nothing herein diminishes the statutory duties of the elected officials or resigns, powers reserved to them by law. So, I mean, the, the mayor ultimately has the chief executive duty, and can override anything that the administrator would do if there was some sort of a conflict where, um, you know, that, that were to come up anyway, so.
Okay. That was my main consideration.
Sure, I, I appreciate it. Any other discussion on council?
So it sounds like.
Can you please step up the volume, otherwise it gets on the loud stream?
So it sounds like it's already a position.
I don't mind reading through the duties because it's not already a position in code. A lot of the duties being done by this are already being delegated out, uh, there are a few added duties that I envision in this position. Uh, just basically going through, not reading at all, but it's available online, uh, the headline duties, public enforcement officer, uh, social media coordinator, the nature that there's one voice for the city, I T and website manager, parks and recs coordinator, planning and zoning administrator, constructions plans reviewer, and buyer investigator.
There's one person?
There's a lot of duties. Um, to be fair, we had one person doing.
A lot of all of them.
Right now.
Yes.
This, go ahead.
I'm sorry, but it was already, there's already a position, we don't really need a new.
Correct. Correct. Um, the nature of this, and I said before, is, uh, and I think council will agree to this, too, it's difficult to be given responsibility without authority for that responsibility.
Okay.
And what this ordinance, the nature of this ordinance.
Defines the.
The structure and the authority to do those things.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to, not that it matters a whole bunch, just kind of give you my thoughts on what you're saying is, the, the mayor's position in the city of Mayflower has always been a part-time position, always, so for me, it's, it's, you know, you've got somebody there that, that.
It's always there.
It's always there, that can answer questions, carry out the, carry out the city, uh, the city business and things like that, and, uh, there's, there's already somebody there, just like mayor said, they need, they need the authority to get to.
The clarification, clarification I wanted was, it's already a position, this just details what he got.
They don't include these that can be, it actually goes further in another section to define some other duties as well. Uh, budget and financial management to work with the mayor and council to oversee that process as a liaison of sorts with department heads. Uh, personnel administration.
Yes.
Records transparency and public communications, which goes with the social media and that sort of thing. Uh, ethics conflicts of interest and professional conduct, which kinda goes under the H R thing as well.
Right.
Um, I just wanna make sure I'm not missing anything. Nope, that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Sure.
I guess just for clarification with people out there, don't, um, watch immediately, um, so not necessarily, positions created, so it's more of a de- defining the authorities of the city administration versus creating, because you're saying it's already there. So we're, you're kinda defining the authority that has, that for the city position should the mayor agrees to go that route.
Yes, I wanna be more transparent on this. Defining, but also it, it isn't by creating a position, because there's not a title with that position that's been held.
All right.
Uh.
So it's been kinda there, but it's just been.
Yes, uh, there's not a title, and again, the authority, the responsibilities that kinda fall in.
Mm-hmm.
That's why we wanna make this to kinda clear that up, uh.
Yeah, I just wanted.
Sure, I appreciate that.
Trying to make it clear for everybody, you know, viewers online or anything else, too, in case they have questions. Thank you, David.
Any other discussion? Barbara will call and vote?
Mark Kigman?
Yes.
Al Mark?
Yes.
James Snyder?
Yes.
Larry Hill?
Yes.
Ricky Hen?
Yes.
And, uh, I make a motion to accept the emergency clause of ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause of ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen.
Any discussion on the emergency clause? Barbara will call and vote?
Mark Kigman?
Yes.
Al Mark?
Yes.
James Snyder?
Yes.
Larry Hill?
Yes.
Ricky Hen?
Yes.
Awesome, so that answers. Um, item B is executive session, there's a few personnel matters that need to be discussed, uh, not known in the form because of the nature. Before we move to that, though, uh, just to where we don't hold it, what I believe, in case you're not aware, the executive session, someone will make a motion, uh, to go to the executive session for a second. The council will be removed from the room, have the discussions, will come back to the room, and if any decisions are made, there will be a, and move on from there, got an open session, uh. I don't know, I, I don't anticipate that being on executive session, should you choose to enter it. But if we can add an item, I think Jim and Joe had, uh, one item that we wanted to share on the invoice before we go ahead, if I can ask that here. Jim, you mind?
Okay, on this, y'all voted to pay this six, take about hundred on all that mess on my backhoe, which has been a total catastrophe. And J C B screwed up. And they sent me a ticket for air conditioning, which that was, should have been in that first deal y'all voted on. And the wire plate that they put on the front of it was what was supposed to be here. So they screwed that up. And it's the same amount, and I called. And what I should have done was waited on this ticket for the wire plate and put a P O on it, because it's the same amount as what they charged me for the air. And we already know they done the air conditioner with that first deal. And then the wire plate, uh, is actually what they should have charged us. And which actually to me, the wire plate should have been in that first uh, thing y'all voted on. There was no way it wasn't. Huh? There'd be no way it wasn't. They screwed up?
Again.
Yeah, yeah. So they've had the guy along, J C B, Mike, he's been, we've been battling this all evening. Over these tickets, they messed up on the tickets. They messed up by rebuilding my backhoe when I wanted a few things done to it. And they beat the lot, but to me, that was their screwing. So anyway, on this wire plate, we can either pay it or not. That's up to y'all.
I'm not, I'm not just.
It's twenty one eighty nine seventeen.
So it's.
Even though we needed the wire plate, but.
And I've got a question, you say the wire plate, but the invoice itself.
It's called a tow plate and hardware.
But they put the air conditioner on that ticket.
They put the air conditioner on that ticket.
Is the wire plate on this ticket, on the, the six thousand? Uh, because there's a lot of work, six thousand five hundred sixty nine, is it on that?
Now, they mentioned in their description of what all need to do, they needed to be done to the backhoe, they had the wire plate in there. And.
It says that they didn't A C work on, on, which we've already done.
Twenty nine hundred dollars.
We've already paid for the air conditioner.
Yes.
In which raining caught me on that. So. And I'm glad she did. So I went and called them, and they said, well, we'll get all that straightened out. And then send us a bill for the wire plate, and that's what they did, they brought it, hand delivered it to me, so. But like I said, on the wire plate to me. But like I said, on the wire plate to me, that was part of them rebuilding. So it's up to y'all whether we pay it or not.
What was that invoice amount that you got to hand deliver it today for?
Twenty-one eighty-nine.
So.
What the wire plate cost.
The same amount that they put on the air conditioner invoice from eleven-six.
Yes.
But that service was included on, I'm just trying to clear this up.
Yes.
But that is clear, but.
Right, cause I need real good explaining.
No.
We just know everything costs twenty-one hundred dollars.
Exactly.
I guess my further question is, with, with the air conditioner on this ticket for that amount, with the wear code being brought up now. Are there any other outstanding invoices?
Yes, we got one more, but now I talked to you about it the other day. The injection, uh.
Which is a separate issue of that.
Yes, but. It's on here, they sent me a bill today for sixty-nine sixteen. And I got a quote for thirty-two or thirty-three hundred. For them to do, and I okayed them to do it.
They took me, they took me how much, what was the quote?
The quote was like thirty-five hundred. And.
Twice.
And then they sent me a bill for sixty-nine.
They're trying to repeat what they gave us.
Four thousand dollars label. To put that pump, in which I called and Ray saying, they brought me an invoice on it. Which they cut it back to, I think it's thirty, thirty-five sixty-five. Because they screwed up, I mean. I didn't order. Sixty-nine hundred dollars worth of work there. But they fixed it, but. Anyway. If I keep on, I couldn't bother doing it, right? Instead I'll eat three berries.
And that's, and I know you just got that this afternoon.
There's not one in that, that I gave him?
The copy of the.
I saw.
Injection pump.
Yes.
Should be right at the back.
It's, it's two, it's two, maybe seven.
Yeah, the quote, the quote's on the back on that one.
But we got that figured out.
Jimmy, when you took that piece of equipment, did they, did they give, did they give you a written address to let them work it, what they do?
I told them what I wanted done.
So. Listen, I guess we're.
Somebody. Matt, I guess a guy on the shop, they said he was a new guy, he just took it in there and went down.
I guess that's, I guess that's.
It was thirteen thousand dollars is what the total was of the first deal they sent me, and I said, we're not paying that. I didn't order that.
So fifteen. It's from your seat.
What?
So now we're sixteen, which is more than thirteen.
No.
How long that? She took this one set.
The, yeah, the injection pump went out after, all of a sudden. And they come down sixty, so.
You know. We've, we're repaving Main Street right now for the same kind of stuff, and I'm trying to figure out when are we gonna learn? To get things in writing so that we've got some coverage to back us up. How many times do we have to get stung before we, before we say, hey, send that over to me and write it, so I got, I know.
Since I've been here.
It's, times are changing now, you remember how we was talking about insurance a while back?
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not getting on to you at all. But.
You need to.
Just like insurance, we gotta make changes.
Right.
Just like these things that happen, we, we need to get things in writing so that. So that you can always go back saying, a little, here's, here's what you gave me, no. So.
And I've done that since then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have, I've got quotes on everything they're gonna do.
We, we have issued a P O for how much so far? The sixty-five? We've issued that, we've issued the P O for the sixty-five, sixty-nine, thirty, right?
Yes, we paid that.
We paid that.
That's the, the also for that power.
Yeah, so, so the, the only. That, that's the only thing the city's liable for. Is, is that amount right there, cause the, the P O is, is the contract for doing the work.
Right.
I mean, I mean, the way it should work is they, they say, hey, it's gonna be this much money, we need a P O for this amount. We say, okay, we give them a P O for that amount and that's it.
Right.
So if they, if they screwed up on their end or they did something.
They screwed up.
If they, if they decided that their guy, their new guy's just gonna go crazy on it and do stuff. We're not, we're not.
But we already approved that part.
Yeah, the sixty-five hundred.
Yes.
This, this other, this sixty-nine and the.
No, that is, that was done afterwards, after we got the backhoe back. The injection pump went out on it in the pickup pump, they come down here, they replaced it. I got a quote of that. But then today I got a bill for sixty-nine hundred on it.
Despite the quote of fifty-five.
Yes, and so they hand delivered this ticket to me, brother, couple. Of thirty-five sixty-five for the injection.
So they, they went back and made it right.
Yes, yes.
So you understand, if you wouldn't have had a quote.
Exactly.
If you would not had it writing.
Yes.
Okay, so what are we gonna do next time?
We're gonna get it right.
Okay, that's what I want to hear from you.
Thank you. Use, use a different dimension.
Well.
I know we're in the J C B or in the, in the central area.
If he wouldn't have got one.
Yeah.
I just.
I mean, didn't all under anybody work on J C B?
To me, this ain't a double, this is complete opinion. Think that doubled invoice over the quote was maybe an attempt to make up for what they gave us on that.
And that's a possibility.
Yeah, because how do you, how do you go from a, a quote for a lift pump, you know, they're quoting ten hours labor, and then they charge us for. It looks like thirty hours of labor-ish.
But, and I think that's because they gave us all, gave us all the labor on that first invoice from ten sixteen.
Yes.
That's what I said.
And that is true.
I'm saying.
So. Then on top of that, we got the tow plate that we need to pay as well.
Right. Yeah.
Jimmy, if I'm, if I'm correct on the, the two invoices, the thirty-five sixty-five ninety-two. And the other, what we call a tow plate invoice that.
Twenty-one eighty-nine.
The amount that's actually on the original air conditioner invoice.
Right.
Is correct.
Right.
Twenty-one eighty-nine seventy-eight, those two amounts total is five thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy cents.
Okay.
Um. Do we have both of those invoices that. Then those are all the outstanding invoices, those are invoices.
Yes. But now the injection pump, they done right now, they give us, they give us a real good deal. We got a new injection pump instead of the rebuild from the price of the rebuild. So they, they did do good, but what bothered me was the first. You know, first invoice, but like Mark said, if I hadn't got a quote on it to start with. It'd been tough.
And what's getting, we've got, and obviously on these invoices that we services three different days. Is the meter on this, on these invoices, is that the hour meter on the machine?
Uh.
The one seven five eight? I'm, I'm making.
I really don't, be honest with you, I don't know. I really don't.
Cause that hour meter hadn't moved, so it looked like we took it in for service. And now we, if, if this fifty. Fifty-five, what, fifty-five, what'd I say?
Fifty-seven, fifty-five, seventy.
Yeah, fifty-seven, fifty-five, seventy, plus the six thousand. I'm swimming in invoices, but, yeah, we're. We're twelve thousand plus dollars of the one service trip. That was originally going to be twelve thousand, I granted. Uh.
Twelve thousand.
The six thousand already paid on the original, plus the almost six thousand we're looking for now.
Yeah, but what I was trying to get y'all to understand is, is the injection pump wasn't part of that.
No, I agree, that's, I was just looking at the hour meter, it looks like the machine has been used during the twenty, this month span of time, but.
Oh, you're talking about the hour meter on the machine?
There's a.
Me seventeen fifty-eight?
Yes.
Do we need to, do we need to research this a little bit more and bang it up and then come back and.
It's messy.
Take care of it?
Yeah.
It is.
I think we should clean it up a little bit.
But.
But like I said, the owner of J C B said he'd come down here and make it right.
I'd like to have a conversation with him and make sure all the outstanding invoices are covered whenever we present to council to cut a check.
Yeah. And then he knows his standing policy to give us a reading quote. It's twice the.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the quote's usually a ten percent variance or something.
I know, we got, we got a lot of. A hundred percent variance.
At least they can call and confirm that they're gonna be in a different service and charge for them.
Should I have a table?
There, there's not a resolution.
Okay, so, can we just table this?
I just want the council aware of.
Yeah.
The situation, Jimmy, we'll reach out to him and make sure all the dust is settled before we take action on resolving to pay the remaining invoices.
Okay. Sounds aren't playing?
Play, sir.
Alright.
So Jimmy. I can make a motion to, uh, for council to go to executive session.
I'll say it.
All the major, I?
I, I.
All those?
Uh.
We need to go in the.
Yeah. Economic Development. Uh. Two big old, over here. You'll send a phone in.
Sure. We could see Christmas.
Sure.
Sure.
Hi, Richard.
Yeah, I'll do an action, yeah, I'll take one from up there.
But they're not firing. Are you, they're not firing me this time?
Well, I hope not. You know, it's Christmas and I really do need my paycheck.
So they need one of the papers in the bag.
That chair's not a recliner. Say, how are you, neighbor? I'm coming for you. Relax, because it's a very. They leave her to. And I'll see you soon. You say, why?
You want to tell me how you're getting? Um, did that was a number perhaps? Or a current bill?
Oh, yeah.
He said on the media, top of that, he said, I do deserve. It's the best.
It's great.
Yeah.
County government.
So.
Yeah. They, uh. All the agents want to go again. Cause I seen the first, that sixty-nine.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, I used the magic. Or one of them.
So the three, it's just three, is that important? It's a five, it's a six.
I'm lying. Yeah. A lot of bad, that's probably.
Yeah.
That's why.
Yeah.
That's why I was wondering if I could.
The actual vehicles. A monster player with like thirty-nine.
Three thousand.
That, which of all.
What was starting costs?
Uh. Great. Oh, we don't copy this. Okay. The side of the. You see, you're. He is. I think he did. Tell him. Tell him to copy. Actually.
That's.
That's what it is, I've got the actual.
Is it a different.
Now I think my quote is maybe. Thirty-two, it's thirty-three.
They're close, it's about, that's what's in here.
Okay. So I need a pen. I think you're.
That's what I asked.
Do you think you're quoting? I had to work out.
Well.
I'm here to stand, right?
Yeah. I want to see show you that everybody else.
Yep, I'm waiting. They worked on this all the way up to do power, and I believe in them. Go home and be thankful. And you, uh. But I had to wait. Yeah. Are you receiving something? Uh, she's fine. It's done. There are a lot of problems, which is just, it's what it should have been.
Um.
Oh. Uh, wait. Is that a column here? I think we're. Yeah.
So out of the executive session, the council. Had a discussion, uh, came to a decision. And for the ordinance that we're just opening with the emergency clause, I would like to appoint Chris Matthews. Uh, as the chief of administrative officer.
Second.
Good thinking.
You got a motion to affirm?
Second.
Second. You have a vote on it, or?
I'm in favor.
I.
Hi.
I'm opposed.
Uh, that's all the business we have. Any public comments?
So you've elected Chris Matthews to take that position?
Chris Matthews to take that position, yes, ma'am.
And is that going to leave the fire marshal? Is that your name?
That's actually written in as part of that position.
Oh, yes.
Great question. Any others? All right, so announcements, uh, said this before, guys, next regular city council meeting was changed to Monday in December twenty-seventh. Uh, planning commission meeting is this upcoming Tuesday, uh, December ninth. Uh, there is a council workshop meeting next Thursday, December eleventh, all at six thirty P M. Uh, I'd also like to throw out there, I believe, the parade and the Christmas in the park is this Saturday. Uh. There's no more business, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second.